Get a good this gust of wind.
Let me know and I'll call my cousin.
I show it's 5:30. I'll call the city Cresco April 15, 2024 meeting to order. Roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska?
Yes.
Fasson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from April 1, 2024, approval of minutes from April 1, 2024, special meeting, approval of tree surgeon license for rag spray LLC, approval of Class C liquor license to McAllister Catering LLC, approval of Class C liquor license with catering privileges and outdoor service for Good Times Grill LLC, DBA Good Times Grill.
So moved. Second?
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fasson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
I think you saw an email, or I hope you did, that I sent out about Seventh Street last week. That first nice day, Gen X was there, Alliance was there, Natural Gas, Black Hills was there, they had to move some lines. Also, you saw possibly that there was a dip in the sewer line. So they addressed that today. They dug it up and they're gonna leave it in place and level it off, so to speak, and then cover it up. And they televised, they did the farthest, there's two spots, they did the farthest south spot, televised it after they were done and it looked good. And I haven't been down there since probably 3 o'clock. So their goal was to get that finished up today. They wouldn't have to cut the pipe, wouldn't be any extra fittings or anything to fail down the road.
Question, did any idea what caused that?
They, one of the spots it was over where a manhole used to be. So they think that's probably, maybe it just didn't get compacted enough or something. Otherwise, no.
It was wet down there this morning?
It was, yeah. Yep, there's still water in the hole.
A lot of water.
Yeah.
When I was here, it was a lot of water.
Yeah. Now it's supposed to storm tomorrow. I guess there's 100% chance of that. So that's probably gonna throw the timeline off if, for some reason, we don't get any rain. I know Wix was there today as well, and they wanna be pouring cement next week. So if it rains, that might throw it off by however many days it takes to dry.
But can it, it can take water now, correct? And take it away?
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if the storm sewers are set up where they'll receive the water, but it'll go somewhere.
Yeah, that was sanitary, that.
Yeah, yeah, the sanitary, yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Where, I mean, when I talked to WHKS, was there this morning?
Yeah.
And I asked him about Second Street, and that guy acted like he didn't know nothing about it.
Yeah, so I talked to Scott Hunnicky today and Rod Friedhoff both, and what we're gonna do is we're not gonna stub anything in now. We're just, they're gonna pour less cement, and then we'll just do the whole thing as one bid. So if you, if, you know, we're gonna take and stub that piece in, is what the plan was before. And Rod and Scott were talking last week, and I didn't know this till today. And between the two of them, they both agreed that it would be best if they leave it alone, and they're not gonna pave as much into the Second Street Avenue as they would have initially. And then when they draw up the bid packet to do the rest of Second Avenue, then that'll be part of that.
So we won't have to dig up any cement on Seventh?
No, no, we won't be, well, they'll be pouring a little bit less cement now, so some of that'll get added into the bid packet. And that way, it's just all done in one dig, so to speak.
Correct me, that stub runs up Second a little bit right now, and then the pipe comes up into Second Street?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Halfway down, I think, or whatever, is it quarter of the way?
Yeah.
Okay, so that will not be done before the fair?
That part won't be, because I don't think it's in this budget anyway. Yeah, it's not in this budget anyway. So there'll be a spot of gravel there. And Scott said today, if it gets to be a problem, we can always throw some asphalt in there or something too. But the, I mean, the goal is to get the whole thing done by the fair, and they're confident that'll happen, assuming that it quits raining, or doesn't rain. So.
So, but the gravel will be on Second as opposed to?
In the intersection.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that part will not be done by the fair, though?
No, but it won't, the street will be open.
Okay.
Yeah, the street will be open.
It'll just look like it does further up Second right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, that'll come off the price then?
Yeah.
That'll be figured out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that may have to be communicated, because I thought that we were going to do it. Okay?
Yeah.
And that's what I had communicated.
Yeah.
So that changes.
Yeah. So that, that's what, I mean, we don't have to do it that way. That's somewhere along the way late last week, Scott and.
Well, I mean, I don't want it to be, we're tearing everything up again and again.
Right.
Whatever's.
Right.
I just wanna make sure the communication's right.
Yes. So this way, we'll, I mean, if we, if we, the way we were gonna do it before, we're gonna basically stub twice, kind of. We're gonna dig and put a stub in and then cover it up. And then, once the bids are in, we're gonna dig again and put the rest of Second Avenue in. Now, by doing it this way, we're only digging once.
Okay, yeah, it should be quite a bit cheaper doing it just once. You don't have to go through all the setup cost and the transportation and what have you, so.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay. I got a few more things. April 26, this Arbor Day, we have a little spot of grass right over here that is in the, in the public, in the public parking lot. And we're gonna plant a tree in memory of Dale Turnmeier. So that'll be Friday, I believe it's the 26th Friday, or it is 26th, I believe that's a Friday, in the afternoon, usually around 1 o'clock, but we'll verify that. I don't know if you saw that new cell tower went up behind the Blue Water Tower one day last week. We wound up closing that street. They asked us to do that, because in case something fell, and nothing did, so that's good. It's a Verizon Tower. They hope to have it up and running pretty quick. I know we've got the CIT that's gonna start cleaning sewer, April 17. I think that's been on Facebook once or twice already.
Is there any way, I got the letter today, 'cause I mean, is there any way to narrow it down from several weeks to, you know, they're gonna be on your street in?
Yeah, and I don't, I know Mike had talked about that.
No, they're not doing that this year, because how quickly it can move and things can change. So instead of telling each block each time, they're just not gonna do that. So just kind of, if you're leaving your house, plug everything up. Most of the houses up there have more than one vent, so they're hoping that they'll have less issues than in the previous years.
Yeah. And then the last thing I have, they'll be flushing hydrants this week. I think on Wednesday, and they'll borrow one of the street guys to help with that. That will also, if we don't get any rain, we'll test out the storm sewer down on that side of town too, because all that goes out into the street. So. Any questions on that?
All right, thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Number two, police.
I have nothing to share with this meeting.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
Administration.
Financials are included in the packet for March. Last week, I attended the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Conference in Ames, and this week, I'll be at IMFOA starting on Wednesday. Also, sealed bids for the maintainer are due, I think it's May 3 by 4 p.m. So I got. It was good. Lots of information and lots of good ideas.
All right, thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
I have a report from the Regional Housing Authority, better known as Section 8, where I'm on the board. We currently have, as of mid-March, four ports, which means somebody from, say, Chicago comes here, because their waitlist is years long. They come here, our waitlist is about two to three months. They have to live here a while, established residency, they go on the waitlist, they get a voucher, they live here, they fulfill their requirements, and then they move back to Chicago. Our housing authority is on the hook to pay for their apartment in Chicago, which is, you might guess, is somewhat more expensive than the apartments here. So it can really hurt the finances. However, at that time, we were down to four, well, these are called port outs, that were being built for, and three are pending, but they will be absorbed by Minneapolis or Chicago, or wherever the people are going. So that's actually pretty low and is pretty good, that the other cities are absorbing them. At that time, there were 28 vouchers on the street, and applicants were being informed that their time on the waitlist is approximately two to three months. That's the waitlist to get a voucher after they qualify and go through all the, which, compared to a lot of places, is really, really, really quick. And in case you didn't know, in Cresco, there are 41 Section 8 housing units.
Where'd the money come for all that? Is that federal, state?
It's federal.
All federal money?
Yeah.
Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Is that average?
Well, I mean, it pretty much goes with the size of your, of your city. Riceville has one, Lime Springs has six, Decora has 62. So it's, it pretty much matches.
Sure.
I mean, the controlling issue is whether the landlord will accept a Section 8 voucher. On the plus side, they get almost guaranteed payment, and on the minus side, they have to meet certain safety requirements that they wouldn't otherwise have. Which most of us would look at and say, well, those make a lot of sense. Everyone should have to meet those. But it is an issue.
The other thing too is we had, there was a fire, I mean, airport meeting, and you know, part of the discussion out there was to see if we could, you know, set up an area for, you know, hauling trees and stuff out there and burn. But even today, some of that, there was a little reaction coming back from that meeting, Dave.
Okay.
So, but I mean, that, I was just doing, you know, see what, feel about, about the committee, about moving trees and stuff out there.
Okay. I just had a couple things from the library. They are gonna get a coffee bar at the library. The foundation is covering the cost of that, and they are gonna put a donation jar out to replenish it. They've got a new thing going on. It's called a Libby platform, and.
For eBooks, right?
Right. I'm just gonna explain it a little bit. They're having a meeting, actually, or a program on April 19, from 4:30 to 5:30 at the library, that you can attend and learn more about it. But it's something that's hooked up new benefits with your library card, and it's a free app for accessing eBooks, audiobooks, and magazines with your library card. And the program is free. So if you wanna go, again, it's on the 19th from 4:30 to 5:30. And then they're also going to have a baked goods bar crawl on.
Is this that, like, the contradiction in terms?
I know. Yeah, it is. April 27, from 9:30 to 11:00. And that's where patrons can bring in a pan of bars with their recipes, listing all the ingredients, just so in case someone's allergic. And then they can taste test the bars and vote for their best bar, and then they get a, the winner gets a prize. So they're gonna try to get that going and do it a couple times a year. And I think that's it.
All right. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Moving on, we'll go to comments from the audience.
I don't, excuse me, get the opportunity or the need to come very often. Hello, excuse me. I gotta make it kinda quick, 'cause I gotta leave town for a business appointment we got tonight. But Saturday, we did have a number of calls, forward to be specific. On the second call, we ended up with one of our firefighters from the hospital for a checkout. He did pass everything and was able to be dismissed. So I neglected, didn't think of that this morning. So we'll discuss that, whether we work on it or not, because they didn't pay for a turn, didn't they? So probably won't be, but we'll deal with that. So that's, that's an additional piece to what we spoke of. On our fourth call, fourth call of the evening, we had a truck sustain damage to some degree, yet to be determined that it's out of service. So our frontline pumper for the town is out, as frontline pumper for the country, is out of service at this time. Did call, called mayor, called president of the Rural Fire Board, called our city insurance company agent from the scene that night. No injuries, no fatalities, obviously. That would be all over the news. But just felt I wanted to come here to get accurate information versus street information, so you kinda knew what was up. Since we spoke, I did make contact, run to Dean's Body Shop and get your truck fixed. Fire trucks are a little bit different animals, and it's kinda overwhelmed with where we're gonna go there. But I decided to call and talk, speak with the guy that does our, or the company that does our annual service, and spoke with Gene this afternoon and this morning, and super awesome guy. Earliest he can probably get in is the first part of next week, which actually aligns really good with me, 'cause I'll be leaving tomorrow for the rest of the week. 'Cause I'd like to be present for that and just see what the damages really are. It certainly looked better outside of its precarious position than it did in it. I'm a little more optimistic than what I was. So hopefully, that bodes well. It's really not much information outside of, we do have an issue. The crew was outstanding about, once that got right, got taken care of, was back in town, you know, offloaded all critical equipment, and was able to place it on what is our backup pumper that we did keep 10, 11 years ago now already, that we use quite a bit, and then, you know, certainly put it back into service as our frontline pumper. A little bit smaller capacity, smaller compartmentation and stuff that way. But everybody stepped up to just kinda deal with things until we see which way we need to go with that.
Does that affect anything? Like a bigger fire or anything?
A big, big, I mean, we also got, the capacity of what we've got in place is not much different than what was in the place. The guys are very confident. We continue to train on that old truck as well. I call it old. It is from a fire standpoint, but it's an outstanding, reliable unit. So I'm comfortable that way. So we'll see.
We talked in cosmetics or structural damage, or?
You know, kind of cosmetic for sure, and from the.
Can you elaborate what happened, or, I mean, is it?
Please call me if you've got specific questions. I'd be glad to visit that. I feel like we're in a better spot than we were. I was concerned about, I was concerned about water tank, the onboard water for firefighting. I'm no longer, unless I get another surprise. There's a lot to be, you know, unknown. Like I said, it looked a lot better outside of that position. So. But yeah, please, please call, in a truly demeaned way. So. But outside of that, it's just real basic questions. I'd be glad to answer them. Specifics, I'd absolutely like a phone call on them. So, good. I thank everybody for your time.
Thanks, Neil. Moving on to new business. Number one, public hearing for proposed budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
There are no written objections.
So I'll go ahead and close the hearing then, and move on to number two, resolution adopting the budget and certification of city taxes for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30 of 2025.
I think you need a motion to close the public hearing, though.
Well, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry about that.
I'll move that.
Second?
Roll call.
Fasson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
All right. Number two, resolution adopting the budget and certification of city taxes for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So moved. Second?
Roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fasson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Number three, public hearing on budget amendment number three for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and.
There were no written objections on that one either.
Okay. I'll go ahead and take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fasson?
Yes.
Number four, resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
So moved. Second?
Roll call.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fasson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Number five, discuss personnel committee and possible motion to establish the personnel committee. So on this, I sat down with both Nikki and Dave, and we talked through what was generally needed from not just the Public Works situation, but as well a City Hall situation. And there was an email sent out with bullet points on the things that had kind of come up that was sent out to everyone. This is more or less just a starting point to discuss it, open up ideas, and see if we need to add, subtract things, what the council's general feeling is on these things.
We only have 27 full-time staff, not FTE, but full-time staff. It's not clear to me why we need two committees, because it opens up the possibility for differential administration and things like that.
I guess from our standpoint, or through the discussion between Dave and Nikki and myself, the reason for the separation was that there was a different hierarchy between Public Works and City Hall staff in regards to having laborers, superintendent, or superintendents, and then the Public Works Director, where more items fall directly onto Nikki in regards to personnel issues. However, I'm not opposed in combining or doing whatever it takes, but I just strongly feel that employees need to have an outlet so they know where to go and what to do if they have a situation versus right now, they don't know. And one thing that was requested by council is to make sure that we had itemized out what our, what our intentions were with this organization or with this group, as far as what their powers would be. And then any deviation outside of the defined powers would not be acceptable.
I'm gonna speak, but I mean, I'm not gonna carry on like I did last time. But I mean, quite honestly, there should be no powers. I mean, it's advisory board is what we've all considered.
And it, literally, the only thing it says is getting recommendations of hiring, or creating recommendations of hiring. There's no, there's no exact power that one individual can do, or one individual group can do without counsel.
We're saying that, though. I mean, but I never want it back the way it was before. I mean, that was bad. I mean, there was a lot of, you know.
So what, what further do we need to do right now in order to?
We said, I thought we said we were gonna do a work session, but I mean, that's beside the point. I mean, we do have a little time, but if we go through it, you know, I'm all for, you know, the group that's been handling right now, you know, you know, going through and talking with the public works right now. As long as that committee just does their, you know, they're dealing with employee issues and stuff like that. But I mean, making any decisions? No, it has to come back in front of the city council. The same thing with anything that's contractual. Like I said, I see on here, certification, paid discussion. To me, that's contractual. That should be, that should be the five city councilmen. And of course, anybody that's, you know, if you're the leader of that group and they're not doing their certifications, then that's a different issue. That should be handled in a different way. But I don't think that, that to me is contractual. Raising the rates or doing anything like that should be contractual. The same thing with employee discipline. You know, I'm looking at that because it's a, it's a fussy area, and I don't wanna talk about it right now, to be honest, okay? Not unless we're in closed session. But I think that.
We can't go into closed session.
Yeah.
That's the problem. None of this can be in closed session. That's, that's why the committee is, is, because we can't do it legally in closed session.
So to interject here, Stan and I are on the Public Works Department, you know, meet several, numerous times a week with Dave and City Department and Waterheads. Are you, you're implying that we would take that, continue on with that workload and whatever else comes up here?
As, the way I understand it right now to be is, it would not change what the group is currently doing. It's, it would continue on as is, but defining the powers that there are within the organization, that's, that's where, the one thing Mike Rich said, he doesn't want it to go back to what it was before.
Correct.
Well, there was no definition before. That's what we're trying to accomplish here, is to define it out. So we all are on the same page as to who does what and what they can or cannot do. This wording may not be perfect, and that's fine. We can adjust that. But it's a starting point that we've never had until now.
Because the part that I look at it, you know, is conducting interviews, applicant screening and stuff like that. I mean, I still think that there should be a lot of people involved, because you're, you know, you're looking at hiring somebody, and we're a small town. So we all know, everybody knows everybody. So.
I think, I think as far as like with applicants, the more people who look at it, the more likely word is to get out as to who applied. And if you're looking at applying for a job and you don't want your, your current employer to know, I mean, that could be detrimental to the employees that we could possibly get.
Well, I mean, in most cases that I've ever seen, to be honest, the leak with City Hall, it was never City Council.
I, it's one of those things you never have proof of, but where else would it have come from?
Yeah, I know. I know. I know, but.
And my concern is both what Nikki raised and the discipline issues. I feel very strongly that employees have a right of privacy, which we cannot legally grant to them as the city council sitting as a whole. They're human beings, and they shouldn't have to give that up because they work for the city. I mean, they give up, they give up some privacy rights. Their salaries are published in the paper every year. But discipline hearings and things like that, I, I think this is an excellent vehicle for dealing with that. And no one ever had any, did we hear a single word when the prior Personnel Committee sat about our dealings with discipline? Never.
Say it again.
When the prior Personnel Committee existed, there was never any complaint from the rest of the council about what was done with respect to discipline. Not a single complaint.
I don't think we knew it.
That's what I was gonna say. We probably didn't know.
We didn't know it. We didn't know there was discipline. We didn't even know there was action. The only thing is.
You weren't even here, Rich.
I was here, but it just started.
Not the one I'm thinking of.
I've just started. But I mean, going back, I mean, maybe one person's definition of discipline could be different than somebody else's definition.
How, how will we handle discipline in a, in a way that respects the employees' privacy without the Personnel Committee?
Do we, and, I mean, if I'm wrong here, but we have a disciplinary procedure in our employee handbook, correct? Do you, I don't have a copy of the employee handbook, but there should be disciplinary rules laid out in that. I mean, first infraction, second infraction, third type thing, or?
They'd be a little general.
It's very, 'cause we went, Dave and I went through that when we were going through the list, and it's very vague.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing to, that had been considered in the past was, how long had the problem gone on? If it had been boom, 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 or boom, and then another one, and another one? Or how, how long do you wait until one drops off, those types of situations? And the employee handbook does not outline that at all.
And I'm not completely sure, I haven't read it for a while, whether, I mean, because the, the intent of the Personnel Committee, as I understood it, was if there was friction or unresolved friction or something between an employee and their supervisor, and, or in one, in at least one case, it was the Personnel Committee that pushed the supervisor to do something about a problem, perhaps not successfully. But none of that's laid out, if I recall the employee handbook correctly.
Trying to think what the union contract says to it.
Yeah.
I think it's notice, isn't it?
There's, I believe there's notices, notices given, and then it, it came with effects as well. But if this is something better that we table, and I hate to do this, but table and bring it into a single work session and handle it at that point, we can do that. But it's, it's more or less.
That's just going softly at it.
And we can.
Going slow.
We can.
I mean, there's some, I start out with some things, and then table some of the others until we think they were, were good to move forward.
And we can. And we can definitely do that. The biggest thing is to outline a roadmap that's going to give the, the city employees, and that includes Nikki and Dave, the support that they need. That's all that, all that is being after with this is to make sure that we're supporting our employees, and we're giving them the support and to, if nothing else, tell them that we care. Because that's the one biggest thing that I've heard from sitting in council to sitting here, is we don't see them, they don't care. And that's not, that's not what this is about. We want to make sure that they're aware that they have options so that they can come and speak to all of us, or some of us, or whomever, or, and have a roadmap as to if there's friction or if there's problems that they can, they have avenues to go to aside from a union situation. So that's all that this is about.
I mean, I, I look at it, there's some, there's some stuff on there, just go in slow. Some stuff, no, not yet.
And that's, and that's fine. We can definitely, we can definitely go over all of it if you'd like, or some of it, or what, whatever you would like to see. We can definitely discuss that and get through it.
Would it be, would it be worth going forward to have a more defined employee handbook procedurally? And it sounds to me like it's kind of Wild, Wild West out there with this.
When, when we were reading it, because Dave.
My, the copy I have at my desk is from 2022, so that's mostly someone.
Well, the thing is, you can't have a policy for every possible thing that'll come up because just when you think you have it all covered, something new comes up.
Are we, are we maybe over, over analyzing this whole thing?
We, honestly, we might be, but it's something that we're falling and failing right now by doing, because when Dave and I went through that, it leaves it wide open. When Nikki and I went through it, there's things in there that don't pertain to Nikki's side of City Hall because she doesn't have the union employees that Dave does. So it's very difficult because how do you navigate that when you have two different sides to procedures, and our procedure is so vague, our procedure being the non-union procedure, is so vague as to how to, how to incorporate discipline or how to handle certain situations.
And the problem too is Dave's got some that are non-union, and then you got Tim with the police as well. I mean, that's a whole separate thing as well.
Yeah.
Tim's just a troublemaker, though.
Nothing in there of police.
Do your employees operate under the same city handbook, the police, or you've got your own definition?
They do have that, but then they also operate obviously under the union handbook. So that.
The union ones.
Yeah, that's a big control for them, because anytime that there's any disciplinary, there has to be Gerti warnings given and stuff. And they should have the opportunity to have a union representative.
When they're getting disciplined.
So does the council feel that it would be more beneficial right now at this time to review our employee manual and use that as the basis for our framework for where we move forward from here? Obviously, the union side of it is very well-defined. We have no say in that, that that's, we can't touch that, and we won't touch that. But outside of that, as far as our disciplinary actions, which we have found to be very vague and not, this is the process, maybe that's our first step before we even get into this here.
And my understanding is both the union handbook was designed to basically mimic most of the union, just for consistency.
Okay.
The handbook was to mimic the union contract?
Right, so that way they're all the same, they're as consistent as we can possibly get.
I think it definitely requires a little more research, but it's something gold worth working toward.
So let's, and you can disagree, that's fine, but why don't we do this then? Why don't we get the, we don't, why don't we get the City of Cresco Employee Handbook to all of council? We can review it and schedule a work session, whether it's before a meeting or a separate meeting in itself. And then at that point in time, we can, we can itemize everything out and go from there. And if, if council has any thoughts, feelings, or expressions on any of that, whether it be this list or the employee handbook, then let's do it ahead of time so that we can make sure that we have a productive meeting and we know we need to hit these bullet points because that's where the tension's at.
So with applications, I didn't see the ones for the business office piece, which is fine, but I did come up today and looked at the ones that, that whoever had picked out, Dean and Stan was here too. And I had asked Alex, and he said that was fine. So I did take one out that I added to Dean's pile and asked him, you know, to take a look at it, because some of us do know some other, you know, people, we don't all know the same people, so. And I just wrote down what I thought, and I'm not trying to micromanage or anything like that.
No, but I think, I, I strongly feel that the council needs to be a part of those decisions as far as who, who gets interviews and things of that nature. I don't think that there should be any closed applications to council, because in the end, we will be the ones voting based on a recommendation to hire an employee. So I, I don't have any issue with that whatsoever.
And that was kind of a huge one, because the way I read that, it was like creating a recommendation of hiring it. I kind of felt like, well, I'm looking at this, so there's going to be two, three people recommendation to hiring, and then we're going to basically rubber stamp the person we hire.
And we're not going to have this completed by the time there's going to be interviews for the street department, so who will be doing those interviews?
I believe it'll be Dave and Dean, and I told Dave that if he would like me to be a part of that as well, I can be a part of that. That's fine. I guess, do we want the Public Works Committee involved with the labor side?
I volunteered, I think Stan has volunteered. If they, if they want us, we'll be there, if not.
Yeah, Dean scheduled on Friday afternoon. They called, I think he got ahold of all of them, or almost all of them, and they start.
Plus, I knew one hadn't called back.
Yeah. Tomorrow afternoon, 1:30, I think they start here, so. I mean, if it's, if it's whole groups, it'll be it, but that has to be posted, and it's too late to post now, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, if it's only two, if it's only two council members.
Right, but if more come.
Oh, yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
Wouldn't need two more of it.
No, I didn't think that was necessary either, but I will be.
So, so based on this sentence then, or this part of it, let's, let's take what we've done so far then. If, if we hadn't, if we just, today was the deadline for the applications, would you envision all of you looking at them and picking your top five?
What?
And then say, picking your top five?
If that's what we want to do.
Okay. And then, okay, and that's fine. So then, interviews, and then presenting to council to hire. So let's say, let's say we just got done interviewing and we're going to hire John Doe for a position. Then does that have to come to the council meeting first before we offer him the job?
Boy, that's, that's a horrible delay.
It does, because then if he says no, then we're off at least two more weeks. And then the other side of that is it would be rubber stamping, I guess.
Yeah.
So.
I guess. I can't, I mean, I worked for years hiring people, and you're, below the council is the Public Works Director, below him is the street superintendent. We're, we're two to three layers up. I, I am fine trusting the judgment of the street superintendent and the Public Works Director, and if two other council members want to be involved. Not everybody can be involved in everything, and I trust them, so I'm fine. Unless there's some, I mean, most of your hires would be union, so the pay would be set.
Right.
And all of that.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's fine.
Basically, you're looking at qualifications, experience, you know, incidentals.
You know, as long as, as long as we can, we'll get them ahead of time if we want to. I, I am just fine with you guys making a recommendation. I think what's been done in the past is the council gets an email that says, we're planning on doing this, the pay is going to be such and such, kind of like, speak now and forever hold your peace.
And we did look that up, the last two hires in Public Works.
They were just announced during the public works section.
Yeah, and then, then the council, yes, it's a rubber stamp, but I just, I don't see, we've had all the opportunities to look at it, to have an opinion presumably with you and go, oh, boy, this person looks either great or not great. I'm fine with it that way. Now, if we hired the superintendent, I want more involved.
Right. And I would think personally that if we're going to go to a level of a superintendent or above, then at that point, we would, that would be a whole council situation. And it'd be far more stringent than what a laborer would be.
But even if Nikki, heaven forbid, had to hire a utility billing clerk, it would be the same thing. I, I don't see, I mean, the pay is a little less certain, but I just don't see that five of us have to sit in judgment to confirm or deny Nikki and Alex's judgment about this.
Who would you, who would you have work the, the administration side of it then? If Stan and I are on Public Works and we're going to work with that group, which encompasses a fair amount of the city employees, would we have a separate group then that would work with Nikki and administration?
Well, as I say, I, I would prefer to see one group. I think we could make two work. According to Nikki, we've got 27 full-time employees, 10 of whom are in Public Works. Now, the fitness center and the library are doing probably their own hiring separately. But they, but, but in terms of recourse and other issues, I think the non-public works group has to stand ready to hear, to be a sounding board for anyone who, who wants to go above the other boards, but that's not the question. So your, your question was same way? Yeah, I'm fine with that. So I had a couple other questions on here about the union negotiations. That's just one piece that I think whoever's on the council that wants to attend that should be able to attend. And I mean, we can talk about that whenever we.
And usually that comes up about union negotiation time, but I, I don't have a feeling one way or another on, on that.
Well, I echo Jan's sentiments on that. That, when we get to that, that's a decision for the entire council and the mayor, that in my opinion, everybody, everybody's in on that.
Well, except for going into the actual room.
Which we didn't do last time, and I don't remember how that came about, but we.
We've, we've been in and out, yeah.
Previous year we were on, this last year, we, we, we all sat in the break room, and they all sat in the conference room, and the two negotiators on there.
We can, we can.
But we were only negotiating a very limited time.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, as far as being in that room, there's really nothing to me that goes on. It's much more going on in our, in our separate rooms. The same thing with insurance. I mean, we're all together insurance, it goes quick, and we all know about it, so.
I think, you know, we do need to have a, a work session and pound out the details, and then, and, yeah, because we've got some things we need to work toward.
So why don't we send, why don't we send out the employee, the employee handbook?
And the union contract.
And the union contract, so we can see what they are in similarity and in contrast, so we can make sure to equalize that. We can look at the list that, and again, this list is very general. It's just more or less a, a starting point. There may be more that needs to go in there, there may need to be things that are cut out, that's fine, but it at least gives us a starting point to build the building block so that we can put together something. So again, our employees have a place to go in the event that they need to talk to someone that, that's not necessarily their supervisor, that may not necessarily be Dave, but it's a, it's an opportunity for their voice to be heard and know that the council cares and wants to hear from them, so. I guess if that's it, that, that kind of ends that topic, if that's agreed on by everyone.
Do you have a date in mind? Do you want to do it before the next council meeting or separately?
I think it's May 1st.
Next council, May 6th.
May 6th?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we set it up for 4:30 that day before. Are you guys fine with that? Give us an hour. We'll have the information to, to look over and.
I'll get that out right away.
That way we can.
Day before, did you say?
No, the meeting the same, the.
One hour before.
Before the.
May 6th.
And then, and then if there's anything ahead of time that we, that you see that's glaringly obvious that we need to address, it'd be great if we could communicate that.
Gives us time to get it brought up?
Gets it time to be polished so that we can make sure that we're making the best use of that time. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to item number six, discuss City Hall part-time staff and possible motion to advertise for a position.
And so that's just with how new all of us are in our current positions, just to give us a little bit of extra help here through the summer, possibly through budget season. We currently have $10,000 in next fiscal year budget, so it would definitely not be over that. Maybe 10 hours a month tops would probably be most, but.
You think we can honestly hire somebody part-time that can be a contributing member to that? Is there people out there that?
I hope so.
Okay.
How many hours are we talking?
I think I did the math, and I would say no more than 10, 20 hours a month tops.
So are you talking like a PR in-person?
Correct. Only as needed. Like, today would have been a great day to have somebody here with council and billing, getting the shut offs out, stuff like that.
I think it's, I'm, I'm astonished that with people being so new that you made it this far, so I, I think that's a tribute to your sanity, and I, I would make a motion to advertise, subject to the constraints you've listed.
Okay. And with this one, since it's part-time, there'd be no benefits. IFRS would only be paid if they qualify or they're currently IFRS eligible, so.
I have one other question. Is anything in the office something that a silver cord student could do?
Potentially, yeah. We have used them in the past.
Stuff envelopes instead of the council.
Stuffed envelopes would be one of them, yes.
What, what's that? I mean, I don't remember.
Stuffing wallets?
Community service hours for high school graduates for their silver cord.
Yep.
And they don't, they don't get paid, right, or do they?
No, they don't get paid.
They don't get paid.
But we're, we're paying somebody, though, right?
Right, this would be to pay somebody.
Well, I guess I forgot to ask, how much are you planning on paying?
That would be negotiated.
Okay.
Like I said, I just have $10,000 in the budget, so it'd be no more than that for the fiscal year.
You moved that, need a second, huh? I'll second it.
Roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Lyska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
That concludes our new business.
Can I, can we bring up something that's not on the agenda?
Can't do anything about it.
Can't, can I, it can't be brought up for discussion?
You can state, say something, but you can't.
I just want to say I noticed that the, they put the new playground equipment in a park up there. Looks very nice. Leads me to the next question. That eyesore, that's a little farther downstream with that. Is that something that we want to be reaching out to the public and see if we can get some community support wrapped around that thing and try to get it, somebody, a group to take over it?
We're in the making, right?
Laughing on that one, because guess who had that project?
Yes, yes.
The mayor does.
There, there is a committee, there is discussion on fundraising and how they'll handle it. There are Cricket funds for it currently. There has been discussion on potential grants as well for it through, with Cricket and Howard County Business and Tourism. Right now, the delay is we have two, well, three major projects going on throughout the community, and so it's been kind of planning and idling until those projects come to fruition. And at that point in time, you can only take so much out of a turnip, you know?
If we wait long enough, it'll just dissolve into the ground, too.
I did have a message on my phone here in the last couple of weeks, and it was from some coatings company that maybe reached out to about the train. Does that ring a bell? He left his name and number, I haven't called him back. I could, I mean, I could see what he says and at least have a number.
I understand that, that. I understand that, that this is gonna take time, but I would feel better that if I knew that there was somebody getting their hands wrapped around it, because this is two, three years down the road. In two, three years down the road.
It is on the CIP, so we'd look at it again this fall for sure.
The discussion that's taken place is how much can you do yourself? How much do you have to outsource? And then at that point in time, figure out what your budgetary number is going to be. But now that we have a coating person who's called about it, then that gives us an even bigger step in the right direction for it.
Do you guys deal with any coatings out there or is that strictly probably?
It's.
Feather lighter, right?
Um, the stuff that we deal in is off-site. We don't do it onsite. So that's, it's a tough one. Because it's, it's in that, it's in the environment, it's in the atmosphere, so you're gonna fight the elements trying to get it done. But I.
So you have to put a dang tan around the dang thing?
Well, that's what they did the last time, but the prep was not accurate, wasn't properly applied, obviously. But what I, the process that I've already reached out to is the same company that did the marquee, because they did it paint and bucket. And they brush painted it all on. And the marquee, it's faded, but it hasn't, you know, it's, it's not an eyesore, it's not popping and buckling and rusting or anything like that. So I reached out to them and I actually know what they use for the paint. Because it's, it's literally a sign paint. So it, it's hard to explain what it is because it's not an epoxy, but it's a different type of enamel that they use. So I looked into that, but after that, I haven't gone any farther, admittedly.
Is that 15 years ago?
The marquee was 15, I believe.
The paint's gonna be the least of our issues with the train, the metalwork is gonna be the issue there.
The, it's just the prep really, it's not, but.
I think the last time, didn't one of the auto parts stores donate it all?
It was just a hurry up deal for rag ride up, it splashed on and.
And I think it was automotive paint that was put on.
It could have been.
Which, no problem, that's very durable.
Just the prep.
You know, it needs like an epoxy primer or something like that. But like Gary said, the big issue is all the metalwork, cutting out the damaged stuff, welding in new.
And looking at it, I don't think that it's, I don't think that the metal is damaged. I think that it's got more just paint pop and then surface rust on it. But without going through and going inside of it to see how bad it is, and that's something that, as a volunteer to the community, I'd be more than happy to talk to Jason Passmore and see if I couldn't get inside and take a look at it with somebody, you know, beyond just me, in my opinion.
What about the tracks and stuff like that? Don't need nothing there.
Is there any chance the water tower people would do it? I thought they did a great job.
We, at one point in time, we had.
Not a bad idea.
Asked about that, but then it never came any farther. But we, obviously, we have the contacts from the water tower people and they've got a very durable finish.
Oh, yeah.
But their expertise is up there making money.
Different, but.
This is gonna be a low-budget deal.
Well, or ask Tim Dixon, wasn't that his name, the engineer, what they used?
Yeah.
I'll reach out to the dude that called and the gentleman and.
We have the specifications on the paint from the water tower from the people in Clear Lake, so.
Yeah. I'll reach out and see what that guy knows too. Maybe he put a quote together that we don't know about or something, I don't know.
I'll just comment that according to the paper, a few years ago, some years ago, the county somehow managed to move a whole cannon and meld it down. We could do the same thing to the train.
And scrap steel's gonna be 200 bucks a ton this summer, so, just kidding.
Not kidding.
Well, that's the things I was asking about, is all that infrastructure, is that all still good?
I thought there's been reports that some of the track was sinking, but I.
That's what I was wondering.
It wasn't the tracks, it was the, the ties itself. But that's, that's fixable, it's just a matter of.
Don't you have to lift the train off to slide new tracks in?
No, you could, you could, if you get in there, you can dig out the one track, pull the pins, slide the, or the tie-in, slide the other tie-in. The only thing is, you can't have the wheels directly on the tie that you're going to pull out because it'll be weighted. But we know someone who has a end loader that could hook up to it within reason and pull it backwards or forwards, so.
Got to see this.
Yeah, I don't think the coating is the issue. It's the metalwork, it's, it's.
You think that would be the most money? The metalwork would be the most money, not the real?
I think that's gonna be the big issue.
I guess I haven't looked real close, is it rusting or what?
Well, I haven't looked at it real close either, but.
To, unless, unless you get inside and you see daylight, it's surface, so a wire brush will take it mostly off, but yeah.
We don't use nothing else, we're never.
We can look at all that CIP time too.
Definitely.
When I send out the list.
I'll call my, I'll call that guy and see where.
If you're gonna go when you're, just make sure your time shot's up today, Dave.
Oh, really? Okay.
On that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yeah.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Fusska?
Yes.
Need adjourn.